Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the reasons listed on the closing statement? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, so we're now in closed session. So, we would have to excuse members of the public who are here until the open session begins at seven. All the staff and administrative team can remain for the closed session. Good to go, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the monthly meeting of Wycomico County Board of Education. Before we move to the pledge to the flag, which is how we always start our meetings, I just want to make one general comment, and that is, it's really great to be in person, no masks, no headphones. Everybody that wants to be here can be here, and that's the first time that, this is the first time we're having what I call a typical Board of Ed meeting since March 10th of 2020. So, none of us thought it would go that long, but I went back and looked at the calendar, and that's how long it's been going on. So, thank you all for attending. Welcome, and I hope that every meeting in the future is the same way, where we're all in person. So, we'll begin with the pledge to allegiance. We usually have a student, but they're on summer break, so I'll proudly lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice
3.2, approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Move.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 3.3, moment of silence. Since our last meeting, we've lost some colleagues and former colleagues of the Board of Education. Mr. Andrew Junta, who taught from 1965 to 1983 at Y High, and then from 1983 to 2002, he was at Bennett Middle. Magdi Luma was a kindergarten student at Beaver Run Elementary School. Sang Ho Beck was a graduate of James M. Bennett in 2020, and was part of the James M. Bennett High School 2019 championship team. And a school bus contractor of 50 years, Norma Lee Anne Hales. So, in your own way, recognize these fallen heroes in my mind, and with a moment of silence. 3.4, public comments. Public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' comments on topics concerning Wycomico Public Schools. The board chairman has the right to limit public comments in length to those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify individuals or an individual, appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that more appropriately are addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. So, this evening, we have six individuals who signed up to speak under public comment. Before we move to them, I would do want to make some general comments about the public comment section. As you know, we were on Zoom, then we were on Zoom and people in person. When you were here in person, you couldn't hear the Zoom, so that's why we continued with asking you to preregister. We limited it to three minutes, and we limited it to 10 folks. After people were discussing it over the weekend, we opened it up Monday to an unlimited number. It's still three minutes, and our plan is, beginning of the next meeting, there won't be preregistration. When you arrive for our evening or afternoon meeting, if you want to do public comment, there'll be someone in the hallway that can give you the form to fill out. So, again, we'll be back to what I call our typical meeting, our typical public comment. The reason that we did the preregistration this time was because of, we just didn't know how this was going to go as we transitioned. So, this evening, we have six folks. The first one, Mr. Fred Conley. Welcome.
Thank you. So, maybe you remember me from last meeting being somewhat critical of the block scheduling, until which my three minutes ran out. So, I'm going to try to finish that up. I just can't seem to get over the fact that we're even considering experimenting with our children's education for a second year in a row, which this block scheduling is going to be. So, I kind of left off at the AP exam. I'll give you my daughter's experience on the AP for this year. For the AP part, my student had zero communication, no communication at all, with her AP teacher after the first semester. Nothing in flex period, nothing after school, and nothing on the weekends, like Assistant Superintendent Briggs claimed to have happened. To be clear, this is not the teacher's fault. How do we expect this teacher to make additional time for kids he had in the first semester when he's having to teach kids the second semester? He doesn't have the time or she to teach this. AP test scores will go down under block scheduling, despite what the administration is telling the board. Asking a 14-year-old freshman to sit through four 80-minute classes every day with only a 25-minute period break. We were in person last meeting at the Board of Ed. Three Board of Ed members got up and excused themselves from the meeting in the first 30 minutes. You're going to ask a 14-year-old to sit through four 80-minute classes a day? I don't think it's really possible. Ask yourselves if you could sit through four Board of Ed meetings every day with a 25-minute break in the middle. That's what you're asking these kids to do. Like he did with the COVID pandemic, Dr. Briggs claimed last month that he's consulted, quote, "many parents" about block scheduling. My personal experience is just like that of Ms. Anne Sathowski. I've not been able to identify a single parent or student in support of block scheduling. Had I not watched this meeting on Zoom two months ago, I would not have even known that anybody was considering completely changing the schedule at the high school. Many parents, there has been zero communication with any parent from the, from the school telling them that there's going to be block scheduling next year. Zero. I've talked to approximately 50 parents and students from different households from three to four high schools. Not a single one of them is in support of this schedule. Not one. Please, Board of Ed members, do an hour's research online. It's not a good thing. The other thing I will say, whether people are for or against the research, there is not a single statement that doesn't say extensive training for teachers to allow them to learn to teach, and this system has to take place. Zero training has happened. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Nicole Ackley, also District 2 Councilwoman Ackley. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here today to speak as a parent, and it feels a little awkward being on the other side of the table, I have to say. If you guys are kind to me, President Malone, Vice President, because he's not here, and fellow board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I also want to thank the Delmarva Parent Teacher Coalition. They have not only helped parents guiding us through this pandemic and getting us where we need to be, but they've also helped students with going on to college and what they needed, and they have been an outlet for many teachers. So, we thank them also. I wanted to share a letter that parents who have children that receive special education services received regarding compensatory or recovery education during the pandemic. It reads as such. "A file review for your child has been conducted to determine the need for compensatory education or recovery services due to any negative impact that may have occurred as a result of the pandemic. It was the proposed action following a comprehensive data review that has, that your child has received continued, continued and has will, and will continue to receive free and appropriate education. There is not an identified negative impact due to COVID. The actions are proposed and have been made, that your student has made progress during this period based on the following data: 2020 implemented goals, IEP progress reports, review of any missed services, and classroom performance." My question on this letter is, any student from, from Nanicoke Road back did not have Wi-Fi and could not use a hotspot because there's not a cell tower? Those students did not receive services. My question is, how many students are receiving compensatory, compensatory education? As you know, this is money that was allocated from the American Rescue Fund for these students. Are they receiving it? And if students aren't receiving it, how is the school system spending it? I always try to come with a solution, right? How can we improve the process? How can we help parents? How can we help students? How can we help teachers navigate this better? Did some research, and I found MSD, MSD has a policy. They use an independent mediation service. Anarundel, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Calver County, Carroll County, Cecil County, Dorchester County, Hartford County, Howard County, Frederick County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Queen, Queenstown County, Somerset, St. Mary's, and Worcester County all use that same service. You don't need a new policy for it. It's already in place. So, I ask that you consider this. I would be happy to sit down with anyone at a later date and discuss further implementation if you wish to do so. I've had the pleasure of working with all of you, and though we may disagree at times, you truly have the students in your best interest, and I thank you for it.
Thank you. Our next public comment, Gary Harrison.
Hi. I wanted to speak to you on the matter of critical race theory. I called, and I was told that's not being used in Wycomico County schools. However, I'm not, I just want to voice my opinion on the subject. When I went to school, we were taught to be colorblind, that we were all the same. And that was not really an area where it was a comfortable moment, because parents back then were not comfortable with that at all. And then, we've had, over the years, couples that are now mixed-race couples with mixed children, and for a long time, those children didn't belong in either the black community or the white community. They felt like they didn't have a space, like they either weren't white enough or black enough. And now, we've gotten to a point, I think, in our society where they don't feel that. You know, they, they feel like they belong, and no one treats them any differently. However, with critical race theory, we're going to now put them in a position where they don't belong again. Are they going to be the oppressor? Or are they going to be the victim? They won't know, or am I oppressing you enough? Am I being the victim enough? And then, they're going to look at their parents. And one of those is going to be the oppressor, and one of those is going to be the victim. Do we really want to teach them that one of their parents is oppressing the other? Or that they don't belong to any particular group now? I think we've come in our country far enough that we don't need to go back to teaching to be hatred and racist and angry people. That we don't need to teach critical race theory. So, I'm going to give you some critical thinking. Think about that group of children, that family. On a light note, a friend of mine who has friends that have mixed families, and he said that their father wanted to know, so are my children oppressing themselves because they are black and white? You know? And that's a light note, but when you think about it, really, how, what are we teaching them? We're going to be teaching them that one parent is terrible and the other parent is a victim, and they are too.
Thank you. Darren Lombardo.
Good words there. I've seen enough in the curriculum to know that it exists in Wycomico County. That's not why I'm here tonight. I wanted to talk about what I talked about to continue from the last meeting, and that is obscene materials used in the school system. Obscene materials, as was demonstrated to you, those materials still remain in inventory. And if anyone here thinks that that's acceptable, we have a real problem, a real sick problem in this school. It's not about censorship, it's about following existing policies and procedures which have been completely ignored. Key individuals from the curriculum director, assistant superintendent, down to librarians have ignored policy and procedure. Books have been ordered, some of these books have been ordered without purchase orders. How can that be? And so, when we look at this, we're really concerned that when things are not done properly, it creates a mess. All we need to do, it's simple, follow the established order and procedures. As it relates to books and looking at things, I filed the FOIA request and received some invoices from these books that were purchased. In terms of some of the things that I discovered, is that we have a vendor here, we use Amazon as a school system, they're one of our vendors, but we also use other vendors for books, Follett being one of them. The vendor is irrelevant, but the point is that Amazon is a vendor. So, I'm reading off of this sheet, I have it highlighted here. We purchased a book called Absolute Remarkable Thing for $21.11 when we could have got it on Amazon for $10.90. Allies and Assassins, we paid $25.81 when we could have paid $13.64. Always Never Yours, $15.91, could have been $9.99. Best Friends, we paid $18.71, could have bought it for $5.68. Another book, Bird Box, $20.01, we paid, we could have paid $9.98. And it goes on and on and on and on, hundreds of books, thousands and thousands of dollars of waste. Now, we have needs all throughout the school system, whether it's marching band, whether it's special education. We could have used that money otherwise in other places and made education better. Meanwhile, people are left out to dry in some of these areas. The bottom line is, in my last 10 seconds, we can do better. There's no reason. We could do a better job. It's already established, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and all we're asking administration and the board members is to just open your eyes and please, Superintendent Hanlon, please do a better job. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank everyone for taking the time to make public comments and support the local school system by doing that. I know you care about the school system, or you wouldn't take the time to come in. We'll take all these under advisement and certainly discuss all the points, and we took notes. So, again, thank you, and certainly, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like. 3.5, superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon.
Good evening, board members and community members who are, who have joined us this evening or viewing live streaming through Swagit. I have a couple of items tonight, as promised at the last board meeting. We are celebrating tonight our 2021 retirees from the school system, and we want to recognize each of them in a presentation that was put together, I believe, by Mrs. Saylor. And we have 70 retirees from this year who have a combination of 1,811 years in Wycomico County schools. So, and I believe that there are nine of them who actually have greater than 40 years of experience. So, hats off to our retirees. We thank them for their service, and we wish them all the best in retirement. Once again, congratulations to our retirees, and thank you, Mrs. Saylor, for, for putting that together. The only other item that I have this evening, Dr. Briggs is on a well-deserved, he's on annual leave, and so I have just a couple of items to point out to you in the grants report that you should have seen in board docs. For this month of June, we had a total of one, over $109,000 in grants awarded. Once again, a special thanks to the Donnie Williams Foundation for their continued support of our programs. They funded a grant in the amount of $32,000, or just over $32,000, to support our English Language Support Center for our English language learners, and also $16,000, just, just over $16,000, to Choices Academy for some work with support groups, after-school clubs, and tutoring sessions for students. We also have a, received a grant from the Maryland State Department of Education, just over $26,000 that supports our efforts in kindergarten readiness. So, special thanks to Melissa Eiler for her work in receiving that grant that supports professional development for our kindergarten teachers, and a number of others. We also have outstanding nine grants submitted that we have not received word on of just over $1.5 million. So, anyway, thanks to all of our supervisors who worked so hard to secure grants, and for Courtney Jones pulling it together.
Okay. 4.1, approval of open session minutes from our last board meeting on June the 8th. Assume you had time to review them. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carried. Okay, 5.1 to 5.6 are our consent items. So, I hope you had time to review those, so I would say, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carried. 6.1, upon the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented by the controller for the month of July 2021? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And I'll toss it to Controller Jesse Reed.
Good evening, Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Murray, Dr. Hanlon, board members.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
It's my fault. I should have announced at the beginning of the meeting, Vice Chairman Murray is not here because he's president of a car club nationwide, and he's in Connecticut on a convention and doing community work, and I don't want people to just think that he didn't show up. He would be very angry at me that I did not say that, and it would be well-deserved anger at me. I'm very sorry. He could not make it. He was going to call in, but the logistics didn't work, so I just want to make sure that you understand, Mr. Murray rarely misses, but this was a good thing to miss because he's doing other community duty. Sorry, Jesse, go ahead.
Thank you. I thought he was on the phone, that's why I mentioned him, I'm sorry. So, good, good evening. We just have the one budget transfer tonight to cover the cost of contractual school nurses that were needed at the end of the school year due to some salaried nurses going out on leave, and I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jesse on this one transfer? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Can I ask my question?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a question. Before we vote, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I tried to stop you, but you were not looking in my direction for a very good reason, I'm certain. So, hi, Jesse.
Hello.
For the nurses that were picked up contractually to finish out the year, are those still the nurses that are being used for all of our, across the board for our summer programs?
You got it. We've actually added two more in addition to the two we picked up at the end of the year, so we now have four working the summer programs, and I'm hoping to use the summer school grant to pay for those four nurses that are being used over the summer.
That are still being used. Okay, that was, that was my next question, was the summer school fund going to be able to cover that, because that's a requirement to have a nurse in the building.
Exactly.
Now, could these four nurses potentially be hired in the fall, or we're just going to keep them contractually?
Sorry, logistics working on that part over here. These are contractual through different services, and there are requirements in terms of time with an agency before time with us. At this point, we are filling all of our nursing positions in our schools. It was just the availability of our own nurses during that period of time for which, because there, there wasn't the available, availability rather, that we worked with the contracted nurses. So, we appreciate their willingness to work in that manner with us. It's supportive of our students, which is bottom line.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Okay, 6.2, personnel matters is for information only. Okay.
Personally, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work you have done over the last number of years with our finances.
Thank you.
It's well documented on how well your team does, so I want the public to know that you're doing a great job with our money, not mine, their money. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, guys.
6.2, personnel matters is for information only. So, we're at 7.1, board member reports. So, we'll start on the left-hand side this time, I believe. Ms. Sathowski.
As most of you know, I'm very active at the Ward Museum. And this weekend, we will be, we will be having the Art and Nature Photo Contest, so I'm inviting you to come to the Ward Museum on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we also have And we also, of course, have a youth division. I will be there Friday, Saturday and Sunday, welcoming people and giving tours. I had the privilege of attending all four high school graduations. And participated in two of them. We should be very, very proud of our young people. We graduated just a little under 900, I think. And they are all going into their various parts of the world. And I hope we wish them well. And thank you for letting me be part of the four graduations. And I would like to really thank Dr. Kilgore for, Ray Gore, I'm sorry. I looked right at you and said, I said your name wrong and I know it as well as I know mine. Dr. Ray Gore, for helping me with all of the questions I've been asking about curriculum and the different grade levels of the curriculum, especially the pre-K, K in one phonics program. I really want to see that in the schools. And thank you for all that you're doing. And the other supervisors who have worked with me and answered all my questions, both in person and on the telephone. Because I took a great deal of your time. And I enjoyed every minute of it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Normally, we often criticize the media, both print and video, for the negative press that we get most of the time. However, I would like to commend them on the job that they did, both in print and on TV, for the attention they gave to our seniors this year. Both Independent and the Daily Times, as well as the TV stations did a wonderful job of highlighting our kids who graduated this year. It made it kind of special for them because it was a difficult year with all the challenges that we've had with the pandemic. And it did give a number of parents and guardians and extended family members something to remember their seniors by. The print, especially in the Independent, I think almost every page for a couple of its editions were with our kids. And that, that was really great. And TV stations kind of highlighted the kids, anyone who wanted to send in information on a kid. And they kind of highlighted every kid every hour so that they would have a televised edition. Secondly, I'd like to commend the county with allowing the Arthur Purdue Stadium, offering it up as a venue for the graduation. It worked extremely well. And again, it kind of shows that both the county and the school system can work together and make things happen. Again, it's a graduation ceremony that I'm sure most of those kids will remember, much like most of us remember the day we graduated from high school. It's, it's a special day. And when you have something different like that than someone has never done before, you remember it. I remember when I was graduating from high school, we were first class from our high school that actually had an outdoor graduation. And we'll always, I'll always remember that. So that was a good thing. Along the same lines, again, it showed the cooperation with the county and the Board of Ed with red, white and boom. I happened to go by, I couldn't even get in to, to see the fireworks because of the crowd that was there. And that went extremely well. I'm sure that the cleanup afterwards was something that had to be dealt with. But again, it just shows to what can happen when the county and the school system realize that we are a community and we can do things and, and work, work together. I also talked with a number of parents, maybe a couple dozen parents. And they were real pleased about the summer programs that we're having because they feel that it's an opportunity for the kids to regain some of the instruction they may have lost or misplaced because of the lack of being able to tune in and work remotely. It's been great that also that the school system is providing transportation. I see our school buses are on highways, so that's a big plus factor for them. So our parents are, are really feeling good about what's happening in the school system, although we're still struggling with and I'm not sure what the future's gonna bring. Because if you listen at the news, one week is something about the pandemic, next week is something else. So I'm not sure where we're gonna be come September. But I'm hoping that if in fact we had to revert back to some of those old things, we have kind of gone through a year or more than of it so that we will be able to handle it in a better way. But hopefully, we'll all be back in school on a regular, somewhat normal basis and get through another successful school year for all our students and, and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
I was wondering if you were gonna skip me or not, Mr. Malone.
I would never think of it.
Yeah, all right. So it has definitely been so far a very busy summer. I am enjoying some time, you know, with my children, going around doing different local events. And I am pleased to see the number of students who are working at different restaurants, who are working at the water park, who go kart parks. It's, it's good to see that there is a work ethic for our young students out there. My son's actually working as well. So it, it's nice to see them growing up, showing a sense of independence, which in, in my household personally, I feel that the restrictions we had with COVID and virtual learning definitely kind of pushed them to show a little more independence than they possibly would have. Even though there were days it was a definite struggle by far. I am actually working on reading some select books that are in our high schools and just keeping up because I do have a son going into the ninth grade. So I want to make sure that I'm keeping up with things that are going on in the buildings, checking curriculum. I have joined the Curriculum Committee so that I will have a little bit more knowledge on that topic. Okay, I wasn't sure if I, if I did something. So, so parents, we, we definitely hear you. As a, as a parent, I am taking notes, I'm writing things down, I am reading books that are, I was trying to write down books as quickly as you were naming them off. Some things for me to pull them out and, and, and read and catch up and see exactly what's going on and be involved with the curriculum that my child is going to be heading into. But just remember, I do have, you know, a dog in this fight to speak to, you know, as a saying. And we hear you, we're, we're taking notes, we're working and we are hoping to be able to handle some of these issues. And then, I don't know if anybody else is gonna be doing this with me, I believe Mr. Malone is. But on July 22nd, for the hitting derby, are you hitting?
I haven't decided.
Oh, he hasn't decided. I will not be hitting, I will be shagging balls in the outfield. So if you guys want some wonderful entertainment, I will be out there, hopefully. I will have, are you serious?
It's a, it's a United Way event and it has been canceled.
Well. It's postponed, okay, so not canceled.
So I won't be hitting.
And I will not be shagging, shagging softballs. Well, I was super excited to attend that, so. Okay, stay tuned. Well, as some of you may know or may not know, I am a member of the East Side Chamber of Commerce. My husband and I have a business and we are involved heavily over on the east side of the county with events. And we help sponsor the fireworks that we had over at the Maze Complex. And year, in the years past, I had somehow always just volunteered myself to help verify student hours for volunteering, through the, whether it be through the PTA at the schools. So I had 12 middle and high school students that came out to work on service learning hours. Some of them are setting wonderful goals. Some of them wanna hit 1,000, some of them, you know, wanna have their 75 done, their, you know, sixth grade year. So, and it was wonderful. It was the first time we have had it at that complex. We normally have it at Willards Elementary School, but with some COVID and coordinating factors, that didn't seem to work out. But it was a great turnout, the students are definitely involved. We are keeping them busy this summer by far. And lastly, I want to just say thank you to the school system and working with Title Health in order to get the vaccines to our students in the buildings. I did actually talk to my children's doctor's office and they were packed, they couldn't get us in. And we were waiting and waiting and then we would continuously keep getting updates and reminders. And then, when Title Health decided they were gonna work with the school system on making that happen, that was a huge undertaking. It was a huge task to take care of and to keep organized, to follow protocols and masks and, and things to get the parents in the building directly go into one spot, signing paperwork, cleaning everything in between the tables, we were all spaced out. So kudos to Title Health and the worker, the workers who rotated around to the schools to make our vaccines happen for our students so that we can return to normalcy in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Wow, Tony, I have nowhere's near that much to say.
I'm interesting, Mr. Palmer, that's all I can say.
Did you see Gene keep going like that?
I ignore him now.
Mr. Brown, you mentioned about the special programs going this summer. A lot of people don't realize it, but we normally have around four special programs going for kids. This year, I think we have at least 11 of them in order to help these students who've been out of school to try to get them back in, get a little extra learning going on. And I think that's really great. I don't know if all the parents know about that, they should by now. But it's great to get this number of skids, kids back into school during the summer. I was down at the Choices Academy this morning with Mr. Beal. I have a special attachment to that place because when I was a young challenged youth, I left home at 16, I lived in the neighborhood during the school year, continued my schooling during the summer. I spent with one of 10 relatives up in Baltimore City, which I didn't like very much. But if it wasn't for some teachers, some special teachers, like those we have at Choices Academy, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I have spent a full 21 years in the service and another career down at University of Maryland Eastern Shore. And our Choices Academy is just amazing. Mr. Beal is so charged up with what he's doing. He could tell me all about his staff, his, his, his building, what his needs were. And he showed me the greenhouse. If you go past Choices right now, there's a really nice greenhouse being built where the students are going to be getting interested in some type of planning, you know. It shows something that they can do and that's important. So my hat's off to Mr. Beal and that, and Choices, it's a fantastic place. You ever get a chance to visit it? Go ahead, visit it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you. So since the last meeting, I, I did the Parkside Graduation. I was fortunate enough to hand out many diplomas at that graduation. And like others, I really liked the venue. In fact, I liked the venue better there than I liked it at the Civic Center. Nothing against the Civic Center, also partnership with the, the board. But, you know, the only downside would be rain, but it was wonderful. And every parent I've talked to said, please bring it back to the, to the Shorebird. So I see a lot of people nodding their head, so good. Attended the United Way Awards Breakfast in June, which was actually for the 2020 awards because of the pandemic. Very nice affair, a lot of nice recognitions. Board of Ed was recognized for a pretty high level of giving by our employees, which is also nice to see that our teachers and everyone gives back. The, the Crux of My Board Report is gonna be the most recent issue of the Metropolitan Magazine. I don't know if you saw it, there was a section entitled Student Worthy. I don't always get the Metropolitan, but it's delivered to the office that I'm in and grabbed it for lunch one day and it was an interview with a James M. Bennett student, Noah Hornstein. And I was so impressed with his many activities and accomplishments, I just wanted to, to kind of go through it and name a few. But during a pandemic year, SGA President, two-year National Honor Society Officer, state semifinalist in tennis doubles. And Ms. Sefowski goes and watches doubles with his younger brother Liam. Band member in the rock and roll revival for JMB, volunteered, this part is really impressive. Volunteered with floating doctors in Panama and he's fluent in Spanish. So then he came back and became a translator for Title Health during COVID. Just a very impressive, very impressive student, I could go on and on. But I read through this and I always think of the words Mr. Fitzgerald always says, this is why we do it. I mean, this is why you're on the board. You pick up that magazine and you see a student like that recognized. And he just took all these things upon himself. And the part that took me back the most was he said he got bored during COVID because he usually has 16-hour days with activities. So he got a job at Vernon Powell to fill his time. So, you know, I see these accomplishments and, and, and he's not the only one, don't get me wrong. He was in the Metropolitan, I wanted to recognize that, but we have many, many students like that. And I say to them, way to go, we should be proud of them and their parents and their families for sticking in there and doing the right thing. So to Noah, who I'd like to meet someday, so you made us all proud in this county. Keep up the great work and as you move forward, because I know you'll be successful in whatever you do with that kind of dedication and work ethic. So again, very well done, Noah. So that's the end of our meeting. And before we adjourn, I want to again say thank you to all the members of the public that are viewing this. So we have a live audience and a viewing audience, like you're on TV, so that's pretty cool. Thank you to all the employees and staff who are here. And I look forward to us doing this in the future every month with no Zoom, no headphones, et cetera. So thank you for attending, drive safely on your way home. And I got you out in time to see the All-Star Game. We are adjourned.